Good evening. I am calling to order this regular meeting of the Banderas City Council. It is 6:00 PM and we are located at City Hall at 511 Main Street in Banderas, Texas. Today is Tuesday, October 19th. All council members are present. Mayor Shamen is absent today. We have our city administrator, city secretary, city attorney, city treasurer, and city marshal. And with that, will you all join me in my speaking?
Most gracious and loving heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all together on this beautiful day. Lord, we ask your many blessings upon the Banderas City Council, as well as upon our county, state, and most of all, our national leaders as they make hopefully wise decisions that impact all of their lives. Lord, more than anything, we would like to thank you for your son who died upon the cross for every sins. Lord, most of all, thank you for helping save a messed up center like me. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, this is yours to be heard. You shall obviously 30 minutes. Joe, am I to read this entire portion of open path? This is really steep and misty. Wherever you're comfortable here.
I hate to stand with my mic there, so. Anyway, I'll stand back here. You can hear me, I know. I'll make sure. I haven't been here in a while, and I've been watching the city and the country go downhill. I'm saddened and sick of the way that things are happening in the city. People will not apply, citizens in the city limits that pay county and city taxes will not apply as a rule nowadays or position on anything. And that's sad. And then it's all because of council. And one of them was the big meeting that we had at Mansfield Park that totally obliterated a man because of, who knows? And I'm very disappointed that the lawyer didn't call him down for putting him down in a public meeting like that. That was awful. And it's very uncalled for. People are not applying because they feel like if they come before the council, they're either ignored or put down for some reason. You don't do that. It's not your place to do that in an open meeting. You know, so I'm really disappointed because the city needs to be run by the citizens in the city limits. Now, whether you know these people that have applied or not, doesn't make any difference. They have the guts to come forward and apply, and we give them respect. And we also, it's time you all put somebody new on any of the boards that you have. If these people came forward and applied, think about it.
That was the only name signed up to speak. Is there anyone else? We are moving on. Item four, next presentations on our agenda, but may I ask, was there a recommendation to rearrange?
Yes.
The items, can you please help me out here?
Item seven.
The item seven to the top. The council provision of the closed session to the public. Is there anybody in chat?
Hi. Very nice to consider all the people we have here. Research provided and analyzed. It's a sign you probably get this management to fill up. So, my fellow objection to it, it's a government.
Okay, appreciate that. Can I kind of ask you, David, then to speak to the recommendation?
Absolutely. One recommendation was we have somebody online waiting right now that's trying to go in without money because the item that's on the closed session. We want to address that in closed session and get that person relieved and off the line and off of our payroll. And that was one of the main reasons.
So can we just consider at this time moving item seven C to the top of the agenda? And then everything else can call back in order?
Yes.
Sufficient? Okay, so we'll do that. We'll just address the one. Okay, so with that, at 6:05, we're going to recess the regular meeting in order to call the closed session. For item seven, closed session. Item C, the city of Banderas will need a closed session through Houston, Texas government code, section 551, 072. Deliberations about real property to wit and update for the law ground of Texas land right away on land acquisition for the waste water treatment and pollution.
I'll go to the front of your table.
It is 6:57 and we are convening our regular meeting of the Banderas City Council. Item four A, introduction presentation by Natalie Gonzalez of Grant Works.
Yes, sir. First thing here, I mentioned Grant Works as one of the possible vendors for us to look for funding or waste water treatment plants. And Natalie from Grant Works is here to represent the company and give a little presentation.
Thank you all so much for having me here and thank you for inviting us up and making all this, you know, happen and come together. So appreciate that. My name is Natalie Gonzalez. I work for a company called Grant Works. And what we are is a grant administrator in the state of Texas. We've been around since 1979, so quite a bit, you know, of time there. And we pride ourselves in being one of the number one, if not the number one grant administrator in the state. And that's not me being biased because I work for the company. That's actually true. If you go into many of the state agencies and research a lot of the different programs and see a history of the funding that has taken place, you'll also see that Grant Works' name is listed as the majority of the administrators of those communities and counties that have been funded through those programs. So, we're a large organization. We started out very small. And it was a privately owned business and company. We've grown quite a bit since then. And these services will actually, we do a lot of work for Banderas County. And we've just kind of been, we cover all over the state of Texas. And so, you know, we really love the opportunity of being able to help your city. And I'll tell you a little bit about some different program opportunities that you may have heard of or maybe haven't heard of. Something that Grant Works is able to do for you is we will not only come in and override the grant for you at no cost because our services are absolutely free unless the grant is, or until the grant is funded. Once a grant is funded, that's where we retain our payment from, which makes it, you know, pretty appealing. But sometimes you come to the table after being selected through a, you know, open bid process on a specific grant and find that the project is not feasible. And, you know, we have to walk away from it, which we certainly don't hope would happen often, but does sometimes. And when that does happen, we do not charge you in the cost in our work put in to return that. So, when you write a grant, that process is considered, you know, a bogo. And there's a lengthy process involved. It takes a lot of planning to come in, work with your engineer, and, you know, decide if that project is something that can work for that program. So, after we get hired and we write the grant and grant's funded, then we will also manage it for you. We have an entire project management team that comes on board. And they will oversee the entire scope of work within that particular project from start to finish. Every different grant program has a different timeline in which that program has to be completed or that project has to be completed. So it could be two years, some are as long as four, five years. It just depends. And so for that entire duration of time, our project manager will work alongside the staff and oversee the project the entire time. And they'll work with engineers. At the project's completion, that project manager will then close out the project. They will submit all of the documentation to that agency. And they will make sure that it was, you know, it got through, all the road taken, everything was completed. Now, some of the steps in between getting a project off the ground would entail environmental surveys, which we also include in our services. We don't, it's not an additional cost to you. When we submit our original proposals, it's included in the environmental work already. So it's not a separate thing that has to be closed out. If, in order for a project to be deemed feasible, we have to do income surveys, which sometimes happens in order to make a project eligible. We have to do door-to-door surveys. And we do that. Grant Works provides that as a free service. It's not an additional cost either. To get the project off the ground, we do the environmental survey. Something else that we can do is we have a buyouts and acquisitions team who will come out and perform all of the buyouts and acquisitions of elements associated with a given project, also included in our original proposals. So it's not something separate. Our entire business model, or product model, so to speak, is built. It's set up in such a way that when we bring you a proposal, it's really truly a full comprehensive proposal. We don't want to ever come back and actually redo what we negotiate. Or, you know, say, I rethought an insurance that we thought about and we did it again. Because that just is a lot of time on everybody's plates. It's a lot of extra work. So we do our best to improve on that at the beginning. And then, you know, we just, we work with each other, the project gets discovered, closed out, and we all go on our way. So, I'm going to go ahead and start. I know that we're continuing this course. I really don't want to take up too much of everybody's time because this presentation would easily turn into two hours if I let it. And I don't want to do that to anybody. So, I'm going to go through some of these programs about as quickly as possible. Yes.
Yeah, Natalie, you just saw like what programs we've talked about.
Yes.
The ones we've talked about.
Sure. So, there is one particular program I want to go to. If you look at your tabs here, there's one that's a little forward to that. The General Land Office tab. So, if you go to the General Land Office tab, there is Community Development Law Grant Disaster Recovery. And then if you first page, there is Community Development Law Grant Innovation, which is the second round that's coming out. So, under this program, the GLO, City Deterred Mediation Second Round, the initial grant for that round was one that was a really good program, actually. And it can go towards infrastructure projects. And so we believe that that was something that y'all applied for, correct? The second round is going to be coming out. That is going to look like a regional allocation. It's going to go through your fog. So I would encourage you to be on the lookout for some of the stipulations as far as what the eligible activities will be. Because it will be up to your fog to determine how that, you know, what that's going to look like. And it is certainly something that Grant Works, also one of the things that we do is we keep abreast of all of that information in all these different programs. It's just, that's what we do. And as that information becomes available, we then share it with your city administration. And so that they're aware of new programs coming out that may or may not benefit you. This is something that I don't say something you couldn't use, but if it is something that we benefit you, I will send it and share it. And also to answer those as best as I can. If you find out about programs that you're interested in, I've got, I've given my best part for that purpose. You can always reach out to me. Now, aside from mitigation, I want to go to the Texas Department of Emergency Management Program. Programs, rather. And so, under this, we have the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Programs. These programs are triggered by disaster declaration events that have to come from the federal level. So when you get a federal level disaster declaration, it triggers a release of FEMA funds. That's where these programs come from. There is one that's going to be coming out. It's going to be the Public Disaster Recovery Funds. That's going to be the next big hazard mitigation program funds that I encourage you all to look out for. That would be a way to get quite a few different projects funded. Now, you'll find I'm not being very specific about information that comes to projects. And that's because unfortunately, I have, our company has been hired in the last year as an administrator for some of these programs. And it would be, I would not be, I would disqualify us from any open competition if I were to go into any discussion of specific projects. So, at this time, I would just refer to them as, you know, generative, if possible. That's what I do. So, when it comes to the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program under COVID-19, I would highly encourage you all to really consider this as a very viable source of funding for some of, you know, some different, you know, project projects. Or it could be infrastructure projects that you may need to run. You do not get no, but everyone on that program is going to do it right. So unfortunately, I can't tell you that. We're still waiting for Texas Department of Emergency Management to release that. So until such time happens, you know, we will just continue to be vigilant. What you can do at this time, because we do anticipate that when they release the deadline for that program, so you're going to want to have a project sort of ready to just roll out. And the best way to have that is to sort of start thinking about hiring an administrator and engineer who can come on board and start working with the city staff to identify if it's in use for that time, as well as discuss, you know, begin sort of planning what that would look like, the actual project. Again, no administrator or engineer. So, the unfortunate part about all of these programs is since most of them are federal dollars, I'm not sure how much of that you know, how much of this you know, but you are required to go out for bid for each individual program. And that, I realize that it's sort of tedious, but unfortunately, that's just sort of how it has to be done. So I would encourage, at this time, you can engage an administrator through a form of preferment process or a bidding process with the COVID-19 funds. That would be something to look forward to. Probably more soon than later. And there are quite a few other programs that are in this binder that I'm at block. I would encourage you to go through it and, if you find time to do so, and review the programs. And you may find something in here that strikes you, and you may be so glad. I think we have a lead for it, so you might be interested in it if that happens. So please, you know, let me know and you can try to answer your questions regarding the programs as possible.
Yeah. With the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program, are those applications and funds, are the applications going to and the funds being just firsted by the TDEM?
Yes.
Or is it through another?
Yeah. So what happens is we have FEMA who is the target expense and a partner within agencies like TDEM, so Texas Department of Emergency Management. And Texas Department of Emergency Management assists them with implementation events because it's just too much of a undertaking for FEMA to get it through all on their own. And so that's sort of where that comes in.
I noticed under Texas Water Development Board, you don't have the Asset Management Program in here. Is that because it's so new?
It could be because it's so new. It could also be because it's something that we may just not have really built too much in because it is new. Certainly, this binder does not include every single program. However, that does not mean you would not ever consider other programs. It's just a matter of us looking at them. Now, I will say, some of the Texas Water Development Board grants are more better suited for the junior, but then they are for administrators just because they're going to offer a whole lot of support under, you know, grant administrator and all these important things. That's just not something, you know, we would always consider of maybe the principal.
I'll say that Grant Works does a fantastic job. So we've been through a number of, I mean, all the county commissioners, what means that we're able to go to, and we've been walking along with other counties, a lot of counties not really work at all. And I've also learned, by watching the program on Monday, that they started working at all and that, and watching that, when all of the municipal authorities are active here, also counties are active here, that's what it's.
Yes, thank you. Yes, we do. We work with current counties, the city of Purple. We do work with Banderas County. We have, I think, the community county. The city of, you know, the city of Tandem. All the young, and I'm surprised they're wide open, not way around that. Austin, Dallas, everywhere. So, we're all over the state. We really are. So, we do our best to help as much as we can. A lot of, like I said, what we do is to, your benefits oftentimes more so than ours. So, and we're just a big, you can run the research team as well. And there's sometimes, when you're a legislative official, maybe when you learn the way grants work, sometimes you're just not, and you have a lot of questions. And that's something that we are here to help with. So, do not ever hesitate to call me if you ever have any questions about any kind of grant or even sort of grants work. You don't have, you don't have to be hired by me to answer some, you know, easy questions. So, I'm here to help. So, if you have any other questions or just joining, any other questions?
Just want to present from Grant Works, you know, my previous family was down in San Antonio where I worked at. We got a 49.08 grant, the GLO, of Grant Works. Not this team specifically, but Grant Works probably.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you.
You too.
Well, thank you. I'll send that to a lot of you here. Y'all have a great evening. Thank you.
Item five is the Consent Agenda. Item A, first reading of Resolution 2021, Declaration 021, approving a project of the Banderas Economic Development Corporation for approving disbursement of $65,000 for the purchase of real property. Massive clarification based on the consent agenda. Am I to read the entire resolution? Any of it at all? No, okay. So.
Just need a motion, sir.
Motion. Motion by 22 approving consent agenda and a second by Darcey. All in favor? All in favor and move. Item six, discussion of possible actions following items. A, discussion and possible action of ordinance number 394, amending the Banderas Code of ordinances to better define the roles, responsibilities, and reporting chain command for the city administrator, city marshal, and city treasurer.
Yes, I'm in for the council. This is one of my priority orders when I got here. Let's do, let it define the hierarchy in the city and organizational chart. Ask Mr. Sankey to compile his ordinance in order to do so, which basically brings the city marshal's office under the direction of the city administrator, which is going to be reporting directly to the mayor, currently of state's plan. So, that's reason why I've called for you to sign. And same thing with the treasurer also.
Uh, yes, Tony, I'm sorry. So this is strictly going with the hierarchy and the reporting. And I did notice that some things were taken out as far as duties go. Is that because we're relying, there are officers who are relying on the state statute for those duties and some of the things that were removed?
Correct. Some of the duties that were removed were part of the council. The mayor of the line of duties and reported it and redirected it to the city administrator's responsibilities. So this movement is streamlined in that area, no worries.
So I made a note, like number seven, D, E, F, and G were all removed. It seemed like duties.
Thank you for that. Yes, Tony, I've removed some that I've, in going through this, if you read through all of these resolutions, there's redundancies.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
You know, you don't.
Why all the reasons for the redundancy? Because it doesn't seem like actual duties. We were returning back to the state for it.
Yeah, a lot of this redundancy, so, and just to preface this, you know, even before the city administrator got in that here, the conversations from the council during that process, there was a lot of comments about the duties and recommendations from the prior city administrator that there's blurry lines. It needs to be clearly defined, chain of command, with the city administrator, you know, being, you know, really standing in that place as opposed to this, this idea that is, you know, not uncommon in general cities, but it is less common that you actually have an administrator where the mayor serves in a lot of those functions. And so, and they reached out to me to get this started. This is here for y'all to continue marking up. You can approve it if you want, but the underlying, anything that's underlined is an addition. Anything that's lying through is a deletion. And I know in a conversation I had, that earlier today, there might be some additional changes that he wants to put before you tonight as well regarding some of these things. If you're not comfortable approving it with changes, obviously you could bring this back at your next meeting for final approval or whatever, but it's, any of it's open to this.
I can tell those question keys. So in line with that, I know we did an HR name. And there's a statement in it that states that the HR name or guide superseding ordinances. Are we going to change those simultaneously for the ordinances?
Right. And so what, if you look at the ordinance itself, the adopted ordinance, part two says that the city secretary, because she does your, the city secretary and city attorney are authorized and directed to prepare amendments to the personnel policy for city council approval that conform to the changes made herein. So any changes that y'all, if you can't do them the other way around, so once you adopt an ordinance that's directed, we bring back the personnel policies, which are only actually approved by resolution.
Excellent. So, I, speaking of changes, I do want to talk about a couple that I've been not necessarily enjoyed that are in here. One, I wouldn't say that I'm uncomfortable, wouldn't necessarily, but if you look in section 1.04, point 034, letter C, it says, the last sentence, it says, oh, we have certain conflicts with services. It says that the city administrator may resign by submitting the resignation in writing to the governing body, city council, and mayor. Where I kind of, as I would say, you see, it works as such, resignations subject to approval and certainties to the governing body. I don't know why someone must resign. I have to, we have personal record, so I did in the council meeting, but I'm not going to do it.
So, if you notice that Texas Local Government Code is referenced immediately after that statement. Also that it's, it's not underlined, so that's not a change that was already in place. And that's, Dan, am I correct? That's statute?
Well, that's not, it's not being changed. I mean, we can change it, but yes, that reference, whenever y'all adopted this back in 2002, that's why it has that reference here. So I was pulling it up right now just to see if it still says that it has to accept. Normally resignation, as y'all know, that's, that's true of council, that we have to have resignation right. So, except, my assumption is when I go to chapter 22, it's probably because you created the office of administrators of their city officials as well.
It is in fact, you have a change. So there's a whole reason that's in. So, like, for instance, if somebody resigned and said, effective, and they get 30 days, then either approve that 30 days or then they're effective immediately. So those are, there might be something in the stipulation of the resignation that you would not to approve. Something that I do have a problem with is in section 1.04, point 036, powers and duties. Number six. Make purchases on behalf of the city, talking about the city administrator. Make purchases on behalf of the city without seeking additional approval from the governing body, provided the purchases allowed in the current budget for the amount of purchases less than and was $15,000 and exchanged for $10,000. $10,000 is the level of, I don't know, we put on EDC, but that's a little bit more. The seven people have to, the majority has to agree on it. I don't have the idea of one person being able to $10,000 for the council first.
But it would have come to council first in the budget process and have been approved.
However, the way that it's worded doesn't mean you can't do a budget move for one item. Even if. It says in current budget line now. Right, I think we is a budget, the way that it's worded, there is, you have to give a budget, that's the same. So if we have fifty thousand dollars in one item in one line, especially the way our budget is done, if we just notice, we keep all my issues with, um, if you can spend ten thousand dollars considering that we didn't necessarily need to spend ten thousand dollars.
I think, um, all I said was intended for emergency purposes. On weekend, we never made a, uh, water main break and maybe the first of something, maybe authorization, before then, first of day, we don't have a, a lot of emergency, see what's happening, a little bit, it's, or have a pressure of something out there. So, uh, fifteen hundred dollars, you can not, you can not, uh, two minutes, right?
And I think we can put wording in there that, to identify that, you would, it's a, you know, the emergency cost up to ten thousand, but, you know, it's a, a cost that can then come across, maybe it's, it's ten thousand, it's about nine.
Our C T, you have a different number in mind that you would be comfortable with that, that would give the administrator some, uh, you know, room, room to spend a more significant amount of money, fifteen hundred dollars on a budgeted line item?
I would be more okay with five thousand. I mean, five is a lot, right?
Sure. I, my, my mind keeps going back to this, is a budgeted item that has already attained council approval review. And that's what I keep thinking about. So I, I just really would.
It's not directly worded that way, that's what mine. I think this man sitting right here is, uh, has integrity for days, but that doesn't necessarily mean the one in ten years is going to have integrity to be on the measure. Um, that's, that's what I'm trying to think of, considering we don't have these ordinances changing every two years. And we've got a thinking on, it was right in front of our face right now, and been ten years down the road, and to give somebody an authorization to spend ten thousand dollars because it's in the budget. If you look at the budget, the way that our budget's written, I would challenge it, where I'm sitting at this table, you look at the budget, the way that it's written, it's not for specific items. We don't have specific items in that budget. And to say because it's in that line, we can spend ten thousand dollars.
I think in some I might, might items you do and in some you don't. And I just want to say real quick, so you still have the floor, because I know you have highlighted items, but I'd like to get.
I'm, that's it.
Was that it? So, Tony, I mean, just on this specifically, because Jerry didn't.
This is specific, I'm specific to this. Um, I think budgeted five thousand dollars, um, up to ten thousand in emergent situations for it to be disclosed in the next city council. Emergency itself, expenditure to be discussed as an agenda item in the next. That way we have oversight to it, it's immediate, we block the attention, um, doesn't have fearful discussion or discuss, you know what I'm saying? So that, so that they can do what they need to do at the time, and then the city council can go where they'll say, as, as soon as it's, I mean, as soon as they transmit the orders, I can do that.
On, on this, do you have something, or are you ready?
I'm ready. That's basically what I was going to say.
Um, Dan and David, do you have half those notes? So we'll move on from that. Jerry, can you, you have your hands up quickly?
No, I didn't. She.
Oh, I thought on a different topic. Okay, okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion. Sorry.
Yes, sir.
I had some suggestions, um, put many changes before you.
Okay.
I'm not ready to go on, so yeah.
In the, uh, in the only section, chapter nine, personnel, article nine point zero three.
Sorry, say that one more time, please, I was still writing.
So page eleven, article nine, under depletes, nine point zero three, point zero three two, officer of the marshal. Letter B. Says, uh, the marshal shall be appointed by the city council to serve at the will, supervision, and direction of the city council, as be, and then letter C says the marshal shall report directly to the city administrator on a day-to-day basis. So maybe those are completely.
What is your recommendation?
To strike, basically strike letter B, yeah.
But the marshal is appointed by the city council.
Right. And served, appointed by the city council to serve at the will, yes, supervision and the direction of the city council.
So.
That's, that's.
Okay, so are you suggesting there's a period after the word council and the rest is stricken through?
I would say a period comes through. Please, I would say a period after serve at the will, because we're not supervising if we pass this, and we're not the direct supervisors of the marshal, he would be, and we're not directing, but not marshal, he would be. So the period would be council to serve at the will, period.
To, to strike supervision and direction.
Why would you leave the words to serve at the will? That would indicate you are appointed. You are appointed as a will. To serve at will, then not at the will, right? Well, it's different. It says something differently.
Oh, well, I'll serve at pleasure or at the will of the council. You got to go behind, you want me out, same thing with the marshal is the officer of court, so he's on the contract, so he serves at the pleasure or the will of the council. And so you don't appoint him or disappoint him.
So you could leave, just strike out supervision.
No, it's a period.
You don't want me disappointed.
That's just an interesting choice of words there, I think.
If it's a, the marshal shall be applied by answer. At the will of the city.
Same deal. Jerry.
Let the third break right this year.
And, and I, I think we're all in agreement. Yep, next?
Next, page twelve, at the top, um, number one, says the marshal shall be assisted in the discharge of his official duties by such deputies as the marshal shall deem necessary, subject to approval of the city council.
Okay. We don't get into that, do we? What is your suggestion? I'm sorry.
City, the city administrator should be, mentioned having someone.
Subject to the privilege of the city administrator?
The marshal and shall be assisted to, in the discharge of his official duties, uh, deputies as the marshal shall deem necessary, to be the marshal, right? To report to the city administrator, and since, so it's due to subject to approval of the city administrator, and then if we want to reference the council after that, that's fine, but in this, for this city administrator, nowhere mentioned. But once again, you have to write the line, you have to write the lines of the marshal, city council.
So the suggestion is strike city council and replace it with city administrator?
Yes.
Go right ahead. Uh, go ahead, Chris. I don't want that changed. I think that while the administrator and Will reports to you, the staff, the deputies report to him, he is approving the deputies. I don't think we need to get into the details. So the subject to the approval of the city administrator, um, such deputies as the marshal shall, shall deem necessary, subject to the, I don't think we need to be, or the administrator needs to approve or disagree with the deputies that we need to hire.
Do this?
The official duties of a police officer or deputy is that, this paring, it's the related departments, their chain of command, their budgets, their equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So it's subject to hiring and firing process. It's a discharge of his, of his official duties on a day-to-day basis, which, you know, I do, as far as, it's a daily operation of all departments.
Second, however, but as the department head, he's responsible for people, he said these are reporting, he reports to you, it goes down that way, you're not going to be the direct supervisor of those deputies, they're responsible for throwing each of the deputies, those who are supposed to be that sort of responsibility.
I don't really agree, I don't really agree with that one.
Tony, so I think it states correctly, the city, of changing the word council to administrator, because it's a subject to, it doesn't mean possibly, and in the event of the marshal on vacation or something like that, then it would roll up today, but he would be acting on that. And to me, that's what that says, is that it's subject to the approval of the administrator and we have to get that from our most likely.
I, I, I'm going to get to you, but I do want to get, Kerry has seen that, you go? Yes, well, thank you.
Please, the council, I, I always took this to mean that if, say, if I wanted to add two more deputy marshals, I couldn't just take that upon myself to go, okay, well, let's just add two more, that I had to come to the council at budget time or any other time and say, hey, um, here's, here's my argument for, for, for such things. And so therefore, I, I don't take the same meaning from the wording of this, I think, as everybody else does. And y'all, I don't know how we clear that up necessarily. Yeah, um, and my, my contract specifically forces me to name somebody to be in charge when I'm out of town. So I, I have to designate who's, takes over that charge. And I do, I have a great deal of respect for David. I think he's been the best choice y'all have ever made, as, as a body, not as individuals, but I do have a great, but he's, he's, he's currently not a police officer. So I can't leave him in charge of the police department. But.
We have different interpretations, but, um, by no means the same, uh, I want to, but it's a, it's a.
I, I feel like the way I understand it, David, it's more, um, following the chain of command, um, and that, and that you're right, it was, it was, again, a direct line from the marshal to the city council, whereas that is exactly what we're trying to eliminate. Um, so, uh, again, I'm, I'm open to everybody else's opinion and further discussion. First, you.
Um, so I, I don't know that it's really important for that, for letter M to be in there. And if we decide that it doesn't need to be in there, then, um, it needs to be reworded and defined specifically so that everybody in the council, fifteen or twenty years down the road, understands what we all mean by this, because we all have different expectations. Everybody in the room has a different expectation. So we need to make sure that if we want to keep it in there, um, because if we have what, what we directly able to do, which is have the training for us, um, God's going to spell it out for us, and we're not going to leave it out, um, in my opinion. Um, so I think we can get rid of it, however, should the rest of the council believe that we don't need the urge, that we need to define what that means for the council, even for ourselves, because we're not.
So to, to be assisted in the discharge of his official duties by such deputies as he's suspended, that tells me like you're creating the schedule, you know, who's doing what and when, like, and, and all of that is something you do as a department leader?
Yes, ma'am. I might, might, might ask the city attorney what his opinion is on the, the wording there of the, the.
He agree with you?
He has no.
Yeah, I read it the same way you read it, but we need to clarify, we can, we can say it such that it is with regards to staffing or, or, I mean, how we believe it already.
Because I, I certainly have in-depth discussions with the city administrator about budget, employees, you know, I, and on, on a similar topic, we, I've enjoyed a good working relationship with every city administrator we've ever had, and the mayor, so this is probably going to be, all be very helpful to me, but it's all worked out very good. It would just probably be nice to have it in writing and everybody on the same page. I, I've always basically answered to the city administrator on day-to-day stuff and the city council on, you know, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
But again, we're not always going to have the same council, we're not always going to have a great control and a great city administrator, so it'd either, we need to get rid of it, or we need to clearly.
So, can I ask that, the three of you guys, administrator, attorney, and marshal work together that are calling that specific item? Give me the other change, sir.
Nine point zero three, point zero three, five, on the duties. So the clarification on this, the marshal shall stay and supervise and discipline deputies and shall establish and maintain the civil criminal law enforcement procedures consistent with the requirements and limitations of the Texas code, code procedures. Uh, I don't, I don't remember what you marked on there, but I know it had to do with, um, it's not just the criminal procedure when it comes to discipline and such as that, but it has to be in the form of personnel policy of the city. You found your, that's when we were having connection problems on the. Right. So just to make sure they, they, basically, again, that the city administrator is in the, is in the level of being in touch with discipline, um, send law enforcement officers have certain requirements by law that they have to go through in their, uh, procedures, as far as an investigation, some form, and so, however, they're not autonomous, uh, agency, and HR and city have essential liability, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So city administration and HR definitely needs to be involved in that process.
Yes, Tony.
I'd like to work on the same three people together and clarify that.
Thank you.
But I agree, too.
Yeah, and, and I agree too. I just wondered if it wasn't kind of stated somewhere else in the, in the reporting, in general reporting, but, but we're, we're, we, you guys feel like it needs to be, um, yeah, it's kind of figured out. And in addition, if you needed to list other documents here, um, under item B, Texas code of criminal procedure, you should go to the end and mention personnel policy or whatever. But if that's, I would think that would be implied, uh, or, or stated somewhere else here, maybe, maybe not.
So may I ask for that, um, well, I just saw, and the very last item, six, is that, um, it says by the city administrator or by city council, since the city council directs the city administrator, city administrator directs the marshal, I mean, can be removed, city council there for, for inclusion. We don't want to have to direct the marshal.
I'm going to turn to that. You have seen.
Okay, what number is that?
So then the very last one, where it says by the city administrator or city council, remove or city council. Cause we might, you'd be wondering.
Bugs kind of, exactly, right? Well, no, so if something happened, I would, I would make it work through the council on incident, um, in the first place, it's part of my responsibility, I mean.
I just don't want it to imply that we have the right to direct him and that you're directing him too, but I think that, I think that could be a mix of both.
So I, I feel like we've reached consensus, consensus, um, throughout this document, if we're satisfied that this will just be returned on a later agenda?
Uh, I think.
Do you feel like this requires action for that to happen?
Uh, I mean, I feel like you can take action, but there's two items that, that you've left, uh, something, I, I don't know that. I'll be honest, I don't, I don't know that those two items are necessary. On, on nine oh three oh three five, the, I just think it needs to reference the personnel policies, in addition to Texas code of criminal procedures. I think that's, and I don't think Will disagrees with that. I mean, I think all we're trying to do here is tie it together, because we've, we've, we've seen discrepancies between the two, as have been pointed out by council and prior administrators, and so we're just trying to have enough cross-references and clarity across of what that chain is and when we use those in practice. So, um, and the other one that, uh, that Darcy mentioned, um, let me find it real quick. It was, yeah.
That was the same.
Yeah, so on, on this one, um, I would re, if I were going to reword this to reflect what I believe it, it meant, and what I think Will, uh, acknowledged, and he thought it meant, it would be to, that it would be assisted discharge of official duties, uh, you know,
Uh, you know, I would reword it so that it's clear that we're talking about staffing levels, that he's going to, uh, coordinate staffing needs with the city administrator. Obviously, and when Derrick called me about this, when I was talking about this, the reason why I didn't propose any changes to this initially was because how I read it, which is the fact that staffing levels for all departments and the budget for all departments are ultimately a responsibility to the council, which is why I didn't mark it in the first place. However, if, if all of those departments are going to be city administrator and put that budget together, then I completely understand why it would be city administrator instead of the city administrator. But I think that's all this is regarding, which is when Will has staffing needs and needs additional, additional equipment, additional deputies, however much, however many he deems necessary, he's gonna come to the city administrator ultimately, you guys will see it in the budget.
And that's like a rule of change, so I'm hopeful of moving.
Which was what Darcy suggested.
I have no requirement with that, but, but the official, uh, umbrella of official duties is very broad, so that's rather, that's sort of my names. So when you say official duties, it's that this is staffing, it's a whole myriad of day-to-day official duties. I don't have a problem with taking that and doing it the way it is, but my interpretation would be that's, uh.
I understand.
I'm just making a motion to, um, to final review on the future decision, I don't know what changes.
Our next second, we need to get it done by now. Question, did you hear the motion? I'm sorry, not Jim, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Um, item B, discussion and possible action ordinance five, commending of the Banjera Code of Ordinances, regulating the membership roles and responsibilities of the planning and zoning commission.
I emailed this to everybody, some thought we'd make it in your packet, this is just the ordinance that Dan put together for us for planning and zoning to where, uh, opening it up to county residents as well as not just city residents.
So the, the council had requested, um, to amend the general provisions of qualifications for planning and zoning commission to reflect state statute. And that's what this is now. Yes, Tony?
So we, so that, that is actually the actual, but this is a retroactive state statute, we did that with the E C. I definitely heard the concern of citizens. Um, I want to reiterate that planning and zoning is a recommending body, they do not make final decisions, all of their recommendations come to the city council, which is one hundred percent city residents or final. So, and, so we, we place the people on the P and Z, um, and I would hope that of the applicants that we get, whether they be city or county, we think the best, the best people on the job and they recommend to us what needs to happen and then the state council, again, is one hundred percent city residents and one hundred percent all the final, the final burden. So, um, although I do hear the concerns of our citizen, as those, those are the things to be heard tonight, um, to me, those are the reasons why I, I'm in favor of this, in addition to the fact that we just put it in the studio.
Yes, Tony?
I'm sorry, to person, what is, musical names? Hold on, I like my own, my own.
Yeah, my own, yeah. Let me read this.
Oh, that's so helpful. Yeah, okay. Um, so I want to say that, um, I'm, as a city resident, I'm, um, not close to open up to some non-residents, um, at this time, we may think they're wanting to, we talked about during the meeting, but, um, because, uh, we have about eight hundred and fifty people that live here. Um, I'm heavily involved in all kinds of stuff in the city, I'm on at least eight different boards, city council being one of them. Um, and I don't see a whole lot of people that are on Facebook, um, at any of those activities. And, uh, most of those people on Facebook are county residents and not city residents. I did hear the concern from Stevens, um, however, there are eight hundred and fifty residents, probably conservatively a quarter of those are going to be senior citizens that aren't able to be here. We've got children that aren't able to do this kind of thing. And we have disabled people that aren't able to do this kind of thing, how about eight hundred and fifty residents? Um, if y'all as citizens of the city want to be on the P and Z and have your voice heard, please, for the map that you do. And that's all we have to open this up, we don't have enough people willing to volunteer. It has nothing to do with the initial status, it's highly private, because nobody's sitting on this board just like that. So maybe somebody has been asked, but not. So we really bring up the state statute, so my only question is, um, maybe it needs to be a registry vote? In the city of the county, it needs to be.
That's, that's, uh, so I, I'm not, I'm not sure about the, who said the whole state statute thing. All, all I'm referring is, chapter two eleven is the, the chapter that referred to the Southland Planning Commission. There's no requirement in chapter two eleven that you have to be a registry voter. So if, you know, I, I don't know why it was in, I didn't, I don't know, it was already in there, that's, that's what struck me, it was already something that was in there. But, um, I don't even know if y'all checked that or not when they turned their applications, so.
I believe asking that is something.
You can keep it if you want to keep it, it's not required by chapter two eleven.
So i- if I'm hearing you correctly, Dan, we can ask whatever we want to on the application, um, not whatever, sorry, sorry, sorry.
There might be some things you should.
But we can ask certain questions that aren't directly tied to the qualification for our own information and, and decision-making processes, but the, the bottom line is the, in order to, to serve on the P, the P and Z, um, seats, just have these specific requirements.
That's right.
So I guess what I was getting at is we can ask them if they're registered voters, or where they're registered to vote.
I was just surprised because it was all crossed out that, why is that such a change, because it was not something that I really should have been there to be done.
Sure. And that's, and that's what I was gonna say too, if you remember, again, when you were appointed to council, that was something that was really big to me, was I asked every single person that applied, um, and all of you, the answer was that we got a, done a public information for us to see if we were, uh, registered, whether we were. So, because that's very important.
Can I say the motion? Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation from the planning and zoning, never mind. Do we have an ordinance number?
Three ninety five.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, that, uh, we pass, um, ordinance three ninety five, commending the Banjera Code of Ordinances, regulating the membership roles and responsibilities of the planning and zoning commission.
Yes, Tony, second. Okay, motion by Darcy, seconded by Colleen, any further discussion? Yes.
I would like to add one more, I think, with the issue by the time of application. Would you like to consider that one more motion?
Okay. So, Darcy, would you, um, consider amending your motion? Can we get the language that you'd like to amend for, for the background, please?
Uh, I'd like to amend my previous motion that we approved of ordinance three ninety five, um, commending the Banjera Code of Ordinances, regulating the membership roles and responsibilities of the planning and zoning commission, um, adding the language, should this be a registered voter of Banjera County to amend that ordinance?
Nice, I think that we have. Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Okay, item C, discussion and possible action, sorry, discussion and poss, on, and possible on, um, I'm gonna read this the way it's read, yeah, okay. Discussion and possible on approving a recommendation from planning and zoning on the repla request from Kevin, is it Meyer? Thank you, for properties one six seven zero zero four and one four seven seven eight nine at the pond and main. So council, your packet has the, uh, the government's, you know, speaking.
If we can take action without that being in the word?
Yes.
It's under discussion.
Yeah, it's, it's the head.
Yeah, make sure. It, well, it tipped me up because I was reading it the way my mind thought it should be, but anyway. Uh, so your packet includes the application, um, for repla, yes, repla, and, um, the submission requirements outlined, you've got the survey, and then you have a recommendation by the planning and zoning commission. So the Banjera P and Z voted all in favor, none opposed, to recommend the city council to repla, um, request, um, the set request, so they voted to approve the combined. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Darcy, you have to make a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that we have, uh, the recommendation from the P and Z on repla request for a minor for properties one six seven zero zero four and one four seven seven eight nine.
Any further discussion on this item?
What's the process of it, is it bigger to the, um, to approve if they file it at the challenge? And then is there any, anything else on our end for utilities or anything else?
All in favor? All in favor and none opposed, thank you. Item D, discussion and possible action on the removal and/or appointment of members of the Banjera Economic Development Corporation.
Thanks for that, to us by, uh, that's the floor, sir. Yeah, um, it had been discussed, y'all had mentioned in public that, um, we'd be resigning after the budget is done. So, we've got people that are applicants at this time, and I think that we need to be able to consider, and it would be helpful if we got those two positions available.
Yes, Christine.
Um, that is what was discussed, and then, um, I was asked to stay on until the acquisition, the acquisition of the, was needed. To find assistance. Sorry, I should, should be, should be this month, whether or not now, we're, we're just because of some of the ways they know about the city council agenda, but as soon as that was done.
So I just wanted to point out, and if this is correct, we do have currently one vacancy that we can fill, so that's one.
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
We appointed Donna and I filled, I filled it on the roster. I'm so sorry, you're right. She, it's, she's not on the web, on the website. So we do have a seven, seven.
Yes, I'd like to make, these are new applicants, um, and I would like to reinstate the process that used to happen, is that we request the E C to interview and have them on their agenda, recommend to the council the replacements, or, you know, that maybe keep on, that E C will design, or, we have, we have an open that up as a discussion of the board.
Can I just ask you to, yeah, my question?
Yep, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to, um, request that the E C recommend removals and replacements based on current applications.
Excellent. So I have one thing that I want to discuss, um, and helping Dan here, this is out of the purview of the agenda item, because I think what Tony's referring to is, is kind of like a, a policy, a process of the appointment, of the appointment process. Um, and I don't know if it's actually stated, and, and I'm not objecting to what you're saying, I'm just trying to clarify. Um, that if that is actually a part of the myolons or the procedures or policies somewhere, either in the E C, on the E C side or the city side, I don't know that that's a part of our city ordinance, it's just the city council sort of. Well, I mean, it, it can be seen that way, but I don't think it's also seen as disrespectful to not do it that way, and it was a council decision to, to change the way that it was happening in the past. And I'm not, I'm used to doing it. I just want to clarify that number one, we can't talk about the procedures of appointment under this agenda item. Um, and number two, is that something that needs to be addressed with an ad hoc?
So ultimately, yes, I, I agree that's best, the way I take the motion is that the item is to do this now, to do removals or appointments, and the motion is instead to request a recommendation on that from the E C before any actions taken. So I'm, I'm fine with that motion, I, I, I don't think we need to give a full blown discussion on what that policy would look like if it's reinstated, if, I mean, save that for, for another meeting.
I think that it would be valuable input, the E C, because the E C is at their meetings, they know who's participating, they know who's in the meetings. Um, and so if we've got an applicant here that doesn't even come to an E C meeting, how would the council know that? I mean, and these are, some of these are people I don't, I've never even heard of, so. But that's the reason I think that it, it should be a partnership, we don't have to take the recommendation, I just think it would be good for us as a council to have that recommendation and have the E C.
I'm, I'm in agreement, and I would also just to add that, um, as the board members regularly can be, you guys are aware of your intellectual assets, you know that you might need someone who has this kind of specialization or this kind of past experience, um, and that would be really helpful to recommend. So, any further discussion, all in favor? Oh, okay, we have three in favor, four in favor, so we have five in favor. Did you have a discussion or were you voting?
No, I had.
Were you, I'm sorry, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and ask for your input, although we already voted, we're still on this agenda item, what, what did you have to say?
I, I'm gonna say that in order to streamline and move it along, maybe it could, there could be something of, um, removing a board member within two months of the appointment of a board member to take their seat.
I'm not really clear on that.
I think, I think we're getting into policies and I think we could probably address that.
According to the. Well, not if we're talking about policy in the way it's.
Well, I, I, that's all I want to clarify. I was talking about a motion. Huh? I was just talking about the way a motion is in order to streamline it.
Yeah, we.
Not a policy, just a motion made.
Well, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, um, unless there was another motion?
Well.
Sorry.
That motion passed you endlessly.
Okay, okay. Uh, E, proposal for setting an application deadline from businesses to request for hot tax reimbursement.
The mayor brought this to the council, um, to establish a day, calls other, and that would see them lay out patients for reimbursements for businesses, um, that make improvements and get reimbursed for, um, their business. Deadline for it.
I, I'm not really sure what this, the only hot tax reimbursement that I'm, I feel like I'm aware of is the promotional funding. like I'm aware of is the promotional funding, is that what this is referring to?
Some, several councils have, I mean, established a date that states that the applications have to begin at that, at that point, in order for the council to review them as a group and then decide, but, um, I think that was already established as the procedure, I wasn't part of the council at that time, but I think that was just, I think the date was already established, but what I would like to consider is that maybe we have a first deadline of that date, whatever it is, but I don't think we should deny applications throughout the year, it's a first come, first served, and I think that, I think we, we've served the citizens better, we have at least a big group in the beginning that we know to choose from, which are ranking, filing, and give money out, but if they still have money to give, I don't think we should not take applications throughout the year as, as those things come out, so, um, that's what I would like to propose.
First, um, since the mayor requested to put it on the table, she's not here, I'd like to make a motion. Did anyone else have anything to add? Okay, go, what?
Would you like to make a motion that we table item B until, um, the next meeting?
I'll second your motion.
Motion to table until our next regular meeting, and Jerry seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Item F, discussion and possible action on nominating between one and five members of the board of the Central Appraisal District, Darcy, who would take you please, guidance?
Okay, so, um, as everybody knows, I'm heavily involved in the Central Appraisal District, and often for the last four, five years, as far as going to meetings and being outspoken about the Central Appraisal District, um, most of the, um, taxing entities have chosen not to make nominations for whatever reason, um, which is disappointing, um, and went to the school board meeting last night, um, we'll get into it too much, but, um, I will say, because I said that I would say it in this meeting, I will say that while it's legal, I do not believe that it's ethical for someone who is a member of the board or council, um, of the taxing entity to be on the Vandera Central Appraisal District, uh, or of directors, um, again, it's illegal, but it's not ethical, um, and so there are, uh, the school board made three nominations last night, um, other than that, there has been one other, um, person nominated, um, besides those three that were nominated last night, so, I did make a couple of phone calls today to folks, and I got two additional, um, nominations of people that I would like to list to consider, um, that the council chooses, and you can choose, um, to nominate none, one, or, um, like the board member for all of the board.
Okay, and so we have a combined sixty-three votes to distribute among zero, one, four, up to five numbers, are you making a recommendation to the council?
We don't have to worry about the votes at all right now, we're just making nominations, so the votes will come out after the, the, the chief will send us, and, yeah, will send us the nominations list, and that's an alternative.
Okay.
This is wondering if you have a motion to get, um, your nominations approved during the discussion.
I think you can continue the discussion.
I don't think there's anything to say, or I'd like to make a nomination.
Okay, uh, I'm not, okay, I'll make a motion, if I can. Would you like to make a motion for any, having, when you're closing?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that we appoint, um, Ernie DeWinnie, nominate, sorry, nominate Ernie DeWinnie, Don Giles, Renee Leach, and, um, Conrad Strickland to the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Is there a second for the motion? Okay. Motion seconded.
Go ahead, Christine, so, can you give us a little background on these people? Yeah, um, so, Mr. DeWinnie is already on, um, the Central Appraisal District Board, he did a great job, um, he's a member of the, um, he's a part of the budget, um, he's already found, um, I shouldn't say missing fifty thousand dollars, but it was, um, missed out in different places, and he was able to, to find it, and put it where it goes, um, Mr. Giles has been on the board for some time, um, and, uh, it's open, um, to talk to citizens, and has been very forthcoming with information, and doesn't seem to, to hide information or, um, hide from the public, um, Renee Leach has gone to, I believe, just about every single board meeting that, that has had, um, for probably the last ten years, um, and Mr. Strickland, um, is on the waterboard, and has been on the waterboard for some time, so he's got, um, knowledge in that area, and has been, all of these people are long-term citizens of the Vandera County, before somebody asks, you know, they do not have to be citizens of the city personally, so, and, 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 every single one of them are active citizens, and they care about this, so...
Oh, I'm gonna, I, I wanna, I wanna hear from Jerry, if he's open to talking, because I, I don't know, I sense a little bit of confusion or something going on over there, and I just really...
Well, confusion, I, I just, I'm surprised that we don't have any, oh, I'm sorry, go back.
I was gonna say, I'll, I'll call you in a sec, I just wanted to point out, and I'm, I'm sincerely not trying to be combative, but having said that it's unethical to sit on the taxing entity board and serve on the CAD, you've got two nominees sitting on a taxing entity board.
So, um, they are on the waterboard, which is, um, not the same as, it's not the, the Vandera Water District, which is the actual taxing entity.
No, no, I'm sorry, Vandera County Riverthorne and Roundwater District, the board on which both of those men's seats sit, Ernie and Conrad, is a taxing entity, and I, I didn't know if you knew that, because it's contrary to...
No, because I actually talked to Bush today, um, and, um, he talks about that, so, um, to my knowledge, because I finally knew that you should not be, I couldn't anyways, but I didn't know this until today, um, be on it, because we get ten dollars a meeting to be here, but I've said for years that, you know, when I was running for council, that I wouldn't want to be on the CAD, because I wanted to be on the board, because we are taxing, so...
The Water District is a taxing entity.
If, if the water board, if the Water District is broken, then I would withdraw the names from that motion, because now I would not, you know, but...
Well, I'm, I'm, I personally would not withdraw their name, they're excellent board members, and I would love to see them serve, um, so...
I do find it unethical.
And that's completely subjective, and not rule of law.
No, I absolutely agree, it is subjective, and that's my opinion.
So, but, but we do have a motion in a second, at the table, Jerry, do you have anything?
I guess I am confused, in fact, I don't know why we don't have applications.
Um, do you, do you have, do you want to explain a little bit more about this process, Jerry, because it, uh, it, it's a little bit different, we, we get a request from the CAD annually to submit nominees, the taxing entities submit nominees up to five, and then after, uh, the CAD reviews, and I guess reviews qualifications, they're gonna send it out to vote, and the number of votes we get is, here, I asked you to explain it, I'm trying, if I'm, if I'm saying anything wrong, please correct me, but the votes are distributed through, through a calculation, and as you can read on this, this letter from the CAD, the City of Vandera will hopefully have sixty-three votes, um, it's not an application motion.
Right, right, right. And it is something that's published, um, you know, the CAD puts out information that , you know, this is happening, uh, I know it's been in the Vandera all the time, so it's not something that's been done, and it's something that's done every year, so, you know, it's not a surprise, and I know I put information out there, so, you know, um, and, you know, I want everybody to understand that, you know, the Central Appraisal District is who appraises our property values, and this is really where our taxes, you know, our tax nets come from, it's not the tax office, or maybe it's now that the tax office, it's not them, it's the Central Appraisal District, so, when we have our properties appraised, and how that office is run, it's not only through the chief appraiser, but it's from this board, and this board decides who the chief appraiser is, and how that office is run, and what people, and our work tax, you know, the reason why we only have so few votes is because our, um, tax base is so small here in the city, the largest taxing entity is the State District, so everybody really should be including, I'll go, I would disagree with some of the specific issues, but it is extremely...
Okay, so, and I also just want to add, Darcy, I really appreciate you, um, bringing this to council, and, and putting this list of nominations together for us, um, and I would, without any further discussion, if any, all in favor? Okay, we have three in favor.
Oh, you're taking the, yeah, I thought you said the nomination.
Okay, I thought you were gonna say something. Okay, we have four, uh, Darcy, Tony, Christine, myself, in favor, all opposed?
Do I come?
Not in the vote?
No.
Okay.
I did ask for further discussion before I went to vote, so, no, sorry, so is that in a, a post? So one opposed, sorry about that. Okay, item G, discussion and possible action on allowing the current liaison to the Vandery, sorry, Vandera County Central Appraisal District to receive any and all communications between the city and the Vandera CAD, to ensure future deadlines are met, Darcy?
Uh, George seems well, I, um, asked you to sit on the agenda, um, we almost didn't get to put in, in nominees, um, because the email was, um, according to the chief appraiser, was sent out September ninth, um, so it was never placed on an agenda, um, and from, from where I understand, um, the mayor said that she didn't see the email, um, to see a second time if that's happened, we were in for the email that I wore from the CAD alone, where I've been contacting Mr. Davis, the chief appraiser, um, doesn't issue, just a little issue, and so, um, I just want permission from the council, um, I know, I don't necessarily have to have permission from Mr. Davis to contact me directly, um, citizen, citizen can talk to him, he wants to, and I can talk to him, but, um, you need to be able to talk to him as a council person, um, I just wanted him to give a good, um, um, this is this basis, um, and that y'all are okay, if he needs something from you, like, you know, you directly, not exclusively, but if he was still contacted, you should, you know, that I need, you know, be good with conversations.
I think that was why we signed up for the meeting, was that we directly to the group, I mean, I, I have to do, I have to start making, I'm in the exam all the time, I bring the items here for us to discuss, um, so I absolutely, I mean, this needs to be discussed, and, 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 to the city, is that what we're requesting, is that you get it directly?
I, I don't know that he requires council action.
No.
He's not.
Right. Um, I, I'm asking, I was, I was, the council just to, um, so I'm not seeking action on that.
Well, why, this wouldn't be for taking any action, this is only to receive communications to assist in your role as a liaison to make sure things are brought to council.
It's just been done, uh, when I spoke with Mr. Davis, when we sat down and spoke, um, as far as he knows, it's on, I think it's only been sent to, you know, directly from the CAD to the mayor, from the mayor to the CAD, so, in the past, it's not been sent to, um, to the council, so, I'm just...
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion, sorry, to request that our administrator can make to the CAD, that obviously there's only a liaison, to make sure she's abreast on CAD issues and city documents. Second, just a... Tony made a motion, and I just ripped back, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed?
Thank you.
Um, okay, so we're back to item seven, closed session, to item eight. The City of Vandera will meet in closed session as authorized by Texas Government Code 551471 to consult with legal counsel on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinary Rule of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter two, bits, one, best western free adatement, two, legal issues related to discussion of the city treasure if necessary. Pardon, should I read item B at this time?
Okay.
Okay, item B, the City of Vandera will meet in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551474 personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, dismissal of a public officer or employee to wit city treasure, and, um, since it's a question of, um, open session, okay, so that means we will meet with our attorney in closed session, and then come back into open session for item B to discuss. You don't. Oh, you may, I'm so sorry, I thought it stated that you chose that, my apologies, so these items will both occur in closed session. Okay, so I'm going to recess the regular meeting of the city council at eight eighteen.
To resume Zoom?
Not the Zoom, but that was just for the...
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So, um...
They laughed, they turned away.
Recommanding open session at nine twenty-seven PM, after deli, uh, item eight, action following closed session, after deliberation in closed session, the city council will recommine in open session to take any final action necessary for item discussed in closed section, we have no action, item nine, request and announcement, A, request by council to place items on an agenda. Yes, Darcy?
I just have one, and I, I keep forgetting to ask to add this, but, um, I would like to request that we, um, add, say, in the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, is in addition to the American pledge, at the beginning of our...
I'm wondering why we didn't do that.
So, we did it once.
I did it, I did it, I'm watching.
I don't know, I don't know it, but I'm, I'm down with that. I know, it's like two sentences.
Okay. Anything else, council, at this time? Um, agenda?
Announcements.
Okay, item B, announcements by council, Tony.
So Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, from five PM to six PM, Eleventh Street Cowboy Bar is hosting a meet the candidates for the city council, and any other candidates that may want to participate, I'm assuming in the county, too?
I don't know.
I, I also, you didn't know this, but I talked to James as he was walking out, and, uh, I'm gonna invite Lieutenant Colonel Raul Reyes, who is running for, um, Senate District twenty-four, um, they just redid the district line, so we're now in Senate District twenty-four, and, um, so he's running, he's very excited to come to Vandera, so...
Cool.
I feel pretty sure he'll want to come.
You're just gonna invite the one candidate running?
Um, I will also contact the other candidate, but I'm sure, um, Lieutenant Colonel Reyes would like to be here.
Excellent, any other announcements? Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yes. So entertained.
I'm so entertained, second, Darcy, second, all in favor, all in favor, none opposed, it's nine twenty-nine.